School district special meeting. I'm gonna amend the agenda. So after five. After five, I'm going to add, we're gonna add the approval of the teacher's contract in six. And then seven will be approval of support staff contract. And there is a final addition at the end, which would be fifteen with this executive session. One BSA, three one three A for contracts.
If you're not union.
Those are not union, okay. So first we'll start off with public comments.
Fran Kenny. Come here to, I think that's Spennelli Field on the thing here, but I didn't have that, so. We had one first vote on Spennelli Field. Committee said, well, we didn't sell it good enough. Second vote, you had two meetings at the auditorium. And I guess that wasn't enough. I knew there were promo calls out and everything else, so you did a much better job in trying to sell it then. That went down. People are getting irritated by, now you're gonna have a third vote, I would assume. And people have asked me to come here and attend these meetings, but I guess I'd like to know, have you entered into a contract with anybody on a turf field yet? And I asked last time at the committee meeting, the one million dollars that we took out of the board and out of the reserve funded, twenty-two, or what's, where's that money? Where is it sitting? Then they said it hasn't been spent, so I'm asking, where is it? Is it collecting interest? What are we doing with it? And is the board gonna have intentions of doing this same thing again? Taking another million dollars out of the reserve fund for the Spennelli Field? I guess that's it for now. If I have any other questions, I don't know if I can speak when you get to the number five, but.
And I think we're gonna have public comments for right now and then move on for the agenda.
Okay.
Do you have other comments that you wanna make?
Oh, that's good enough for now.
Um, I think there are some of, we can get some answers for you. I don't wanna speak to where the.
I took down.
You're correct.
Questions, yep.
The, Licker said, I know, I just wanna address one piece that I think that would be helpful.
I didn't expect we'd have a conversation.
No, I know, but I, like, this has just given me the opportunity, like, it gave me the opportunity to, to. I, so I've heard a lot of feedback also about the one million dollars and why we're not, like, advocating to use that for the Spennelli. And that, from my opinion, it is, that would cause more disruption. You know, that money is set aside and could be used for tax stabilization, you know, and that, and that asking the voters, if we do again, you know, whatever that goes, asking the voters to vote to approve funding up to that three million dollars is more transparent. It has more clear boundaries around it, and that one million dollars, like, is there, is not that much in the scheme of our budget, and is there, you know, for, right now, for the use for the board to offset something in for an emergency, or if we had an issue with, you know, taxes, to help stabilize some of it. I think that, that would, that's my answer with respect to that, and the rest we can find out from Renee.
Yeah, one last thing, if I could. I don't think the people, the people don't wanna pay for the turf field. If you wanna get a turf field, find a donor. I don't think you'll have a problem. People won't say much about it. But people really, when they can't afford to do things at their own houses and stuff, they real irritated, they, they're gonna pay for a turf field. And one other thing, the head of the Booster Club, I don't know her name, I won't even say her name if, even if I did it. When she said it to the last committee meeting while kidding, not joining sports, because they're afraid to go on the field, they're gonna get hurt. That was a stupid, stupid statement from that, coming out of that person's mouth. You mean to tell me, people get hurt on turf fields too? That's all I'll say. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Were there any other public comments? Now we'll move on to the finance section. We have the pressures report. I actually don't. It was not posted, so I think that we will not have to make that motion to accept it, we'll accept it in the future. I do think that's that, okay. So the next item on the agenda is operations, which there are none, so we'll move on to the athletic director.
Yep, this is a simple matter. We appointed a temporary acting athletic director, and at this time, I'm asking the board to make that a permanent athletic director. I think, just my interactions with Athletic Director Mahoy have been outstanding. He's been responsive, he's kept me informed. I'd like the board to remove that title of acting athletic director and make it a permanent appointment. So moved. Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Spennelli Field. This item was put on the agenda to have a follow-up discussion from our last meeting. And to get an understanding of where the, how this report wants to move, whether they wanna move forward or what we want to do with it. They, we had several recommendations. I think there was, they had a meeting of the committee and unfortunately, moving. Chad was not here to give an update. We did, Chad did send an email summarizing some of the conversations that they had in. And largely, it was like, largely, it was, you know, looking at different dates and how we could promote it more and.
But I, if I could speak, one of the proposals that the board needs to decide whether you want to take the recommendation of your Spennelli Field committee and bring this back for another vote, or are you happy with? That's, that's your, that's your decision to make as a board. That's what my understanding is what the Spennelli committee would likely to do. They'd like, but they don't have the authority to bring it back for another vote. That rests with this committee, on this board, so. I'd make a motion to bring it back. Seconded.
What motion on? People, do you want to make a motion as to when, or, I mean, do we wanna have, I think, a discussion?
Well, the, you can do it twice in a twelve-month period. And then, I know that the town clerk was recommending that you shoot for June eighteenth. Based on, like, when clerks will all be on vacation and how much time you have, which means you'll probably have to do, if you vote this. I understand you'll probably have to have a special meeting between May ninth and the nineteenth. Or it has, it has to be.
The wording was actually proposing, and then we'd have, we'd have to have the same bond informational session that we had.
Right. And you'd have to, we'd have to get legal to rewrite it, so it would have to move fast.
If we, if we vote tonight, it has to be June eighteen.
No.
So they, they were looking at the best next available dates, like, from a timeline, and clerk, if we wanted to do it during, like, active, like, almost active school year, like, the eighteenth could be, the next election would be in August, I believe. But the one nuance that I understand about that is that it's, like, it's.
It's federal ballots and.
Right, and that we would, it would still be a different path ballot system for the vote, so I think we could look at other.
Oh, because they will have already started to mail.
Right, it's a separate mailing. It's, well, but the, I think there's a, there's a primary vote in August that we could go alongside with, but I think that the, I can get more information, but I think that that, and then there's also, then there's the November.
Unless the recommendation of your clerk that you don't, you do it separately.
Yes, that we do it separately.
We have an opportunity where we might get to collaborate with the committee again?
Fire two.
Well, you would have, you would have a, I imagine you would have the Center of Public Information meeting, that the committee and and the board would be there to answer any questions of the public. And to express why you want to do this.
And doing it or not doing it. Voting now doesn't bind us to any one situation or other, correct?
First vote is, do you want, do you want to?
That's all it is.
Take another attempt at this, so.
Okay. Just because there could be enough, there could be multiple scenarios that, that are different than the one that we did last time.
Correct, one of the proposals was whether you wanted to break this down until it just vote on, the track just vote on the field, is that what you're hoping?
Do them separately.
Yeah, do them separately.
I think.
Which is stupid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll say. But.
With my recommendation, I.
Will need to be done. Doing them, yeah, that's not financially responsible, but if that's what gets them done, then.
It feels like it's least financial, it's, I mean, it has to be for wanting to do the other, I mean. Well, the least financial would be to put two million in the budget for next year and one million out of the reserve fund, that would be by far. So with respect to a vote, like, or, or do you wanna have a vote as to whether the board feels that we should revote and then discuss the date, or?
I think the board, the if, if, if I'm mending the, the motion is possible, but I would propose that we do a revote, understanding that there are still some things to be determined, obviously, date, what exactly we're gonna be asking for.
We would probably need a special meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Soon, if we were gonna do it soon, and if not, we could do that.
It gives me pause, it might as well be May, right now.
Right, it is, yes. For other discussion? So the, the vote on the table is to whether we are going to revote, and Scott has asked to amend it in order to say revote with the, with the details we worked out in the future. Is that, that they might, I'm summarizing that. All in favor?
Aye.
That's, that's it. Okay, moving on to sex approval of teachers' contract.
He must be watching his office, here he is. I would like to thank your chair while this, for taking part in, I've been part of the negotiating team in the many nights that we were there to, at the contract. I, we don't have word yet because of vacation, whether the teacher association has ratified the contract yet. But we have no reason to understand that they won't, but. Next, gonna go over the highlights of what was agreed to tentatively, soon approved by the SU board, who will be before the SU board Wednesday night.
Put a paperclip together in a funky way, but if you just separate two, you can look at the two overviews side by side, which is helpful, because there's a lot of overlap. So it's, it's easy to cover. If you look at them together. So you'll have the teachers on one side, you'll have educational support personnel on the other. So what's common about the contracts, the tentatives, they're both two-year contracts from this July through June of twenty twenty-six. A, both negotiated the same pay increase, which is a nine percent plus step in both years. I apologize, I don't have the grids. I can run and print the grids off very quickly, if that would be helpful. Safety language, as you will see in both, it's eight point one four for teachers, it's eight point six for educational support staff, but the language is identical and it's included and attached. Kind of quick highlight, I guess, to, without going into reading every single section of it, is that the intention of the new language was to provide staff with more information, notification, and, you know, opportunities for response to concerns about safety. It also continues the safety committee that was put in place with the last contract, and extends the essentially obligation that that committee reports out to the board annually, so you'll hear what, you know, what's being discussed through that committee. Both contracts also have modifications to the sick leave bank. The primary change is that it just brings the sick leave bank under the purview of the contract, whereas separately, it's previously had its sort of separately operated regulations and protocols and procedures, so now it's subject to collective bargaining. And also introduction of ten days of paid paternity, paternity for any employee who qualifies for such, which is, which is a new addition, something I think everybody's, you know, excited for. And that'll be available to any employee who qualifies for it. The last, that's the last of the similar changes. So sticking with teachers, you will also see a small change in eleven point six, which is a rollover of unused personal days, can be converted to sick days. The idea being that it hopefully incentivizes people to not use their personal days if they don't need to, because they know they'll keep that day in future as a second. Instead of just losing it, which is how currently it is written. And then the last piece here, that's relevant to this board, is increase, increase in the class coverage dollar figure. That's something that had been stagnant for a long time until the last contract. It's just a set dollar figure that teachers get for class coverage, as well as lost prep and extra hours compensation, so it's a rate that we're trying to track and increase consistent with salary increases as well. So all of those language changes are attached, you can look through them, all the tentative agreements. The ones that I, the changes that I didn't include here for this board's review are all specific to Southwest Tech, we share a contract with them. I do have that language, you're welcome to look at it, but it doesn't impact any, any new teachers, so I didn't, I didn't print it out. I'm happy to provide it. If you flip over to the educational support personnel one, you will see two differences or two pieces of language that are specific to them. The first being item number three, which is the incorporation of non-union custodial and maintenance positions. This is specific to the SVU ESD employees who were former BSD maintenance employees, and Woodford custodian and a Shasberry custodian that had not been part of the collective bargaining agreement. Whereas middle and high school custodian and maintenance employees have been, and Powell have been. So this brings them all under the collective bargaining agreement, brings them all together. And then the last piece that's specific to educational support personnel is the modification of bereavement legal language, it simply aligns them with the teacher language. They had a slightly different bereavement language, you can see that attached as well. Any questions about any of the language changes? And I apologize, I didn't print the grids. I'm happy to print them if it would help for anybody to look at them. Take any action. Please to make, please.
Let's keep the financial highlights.
Yeah, well, so I talked about it, it's not nine percent plus step for both, for both the teachers and our ESP employees. The.
Which is within what we have budgeted.
Within what we have budgeted and bringing us kind of on par where we, where we think, where the board thought it needed to be relative to other school districts in the surrounding areas. So making us, keeping us competitive from that perspective. The same thing for educational support personnel, you know, hourly employees, keeping them competitive with others. There, I'll be for the same employees.
So we're asking for a motion to first accept the teacher's contract that presented. So. Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor? Teachers' contract.
Aye.
Aye.
Sure, same for the sports.
Okay. And we're looking to, for the approval of the sports staff contract. Any discussion? All in favor? Votes. Kristen, are you?
I would abstain.
You're welcome to keep any of these, if you'd like, I can recycle them, use them at the Wednesday board meeting, just leave them, I'll grab them. People will be back to the session.
We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. We have minutes, warrants, retirement, leaves of absence, resignations and nominations, and also field trip. But, and a field trip. Would you like to do this all at once, or would you like me to separate that out?
Look for all at once, so. Second.
Any discussion? Any of them all in favor? Wasn't that? A superintendent's report.
First part of the superintendent's report this evening is gonna be by Assistant Superintendent Laura Monroe and your school principals talking about the MAU continuous improvement plan process.
Moment. First thing, that's a wow.
I'm ready to hand it up.
Oh, exercise.
Thank you.
That's good to go. Okay, so. Uh, so the, the backstory before we, actually, we start. We have been required to have a continuous improvement plan to guide our work for as long as I've been in this role, and this is what guides our work. And there was a pause during pandemic, and state, the Agency of Education paused the process. And we were to hold to the original continuous improvement plans we created. So we actually created them in two thousand nineteen to go into play in twenty twenty. And so we actually have been using them as our foundation. But it's been, it's been great to be able to kind of take our time this year and do this in a more reflective way. So I just wanna highlight the process. So the continuous improvement plan is a requirement, and we are required to be here tonight. We are required to present these plans to you and allow you, we can always come back if you have further questions after tonight, but I wanna give the principals an opportunity to, to share their goals tonight with you. So the process, start, keep my fingers lit just for a minute. So, you're okay, it's okay. So the process. So the Agency of Education probably guides our process, but the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Melissa Senical, myself, were able to kind of craft our own individual routine within our district. And we took, it takes a year to do this, an entire school year, so props to these two principals for leading their teams through this process. So it starts by identifying a leadership team, which we have at the district level, and then we also have at the school level. We, gives us a chance to reflect back on district and school vision statements. We review the resources provided by the Agency of Education. And then, most of the winter was around, we actually started this process with all of you back in the fall. We came and we presented academic data to you. And then we came and we presented social emotional data to you. We also have access to diagnostic data to take a deeper dive, to set these goals. We also held a community collaboration night. We used these two rooms, we opened them up, we had lots of staff here, we put data on the walls, we collected feedback. We posted opportunities for the community to give us feedback through our newsletters and our website. And then at the school level, school level leadership teams even took a deeper dive to create, to really get feedback from their staff. Nice, okay. So then, we created a draft, so based on this intensive data review, we created drafts. We, each school had to share drafts with key stakeholders, and then the big date on there is March twenty-seventh. We have two Agency of Education staff members that are assigned to our district. And on that date, Melissa Senical and I sat our entire afternoon and went through our district plan and every school plan, with two representatives from the Agency of Education. And we got incredible feedback. They were impressed with our process, they were impressed with the work that the schools went through to, to get to the place that we're at to tonight. We had minor revisions that we needed to make, so they were very pleased, so we're actually really proud with what we're presenting with you tonight. We're, right now, you can see the bullet we're sharing with all of you, and then there is an actual system that I have to upload all of these continuous improvement plans into a system so that we can then access our grant. And so everything's gonna happen really fast right now. We also hope that you use the goals that you see tonight when you think ahead to budget season, so you can see where, where these two principals share in just a moment. And you can see where the, the focus should be. So what's happening now, March through May, is that we also, so we have big overarching, these are gonna be three-year goals. And then each year, we're gonna have school-wide goals. What is the little baby step this year that we're gonna try to tackle, and then this year? And then again, as I said, the upload. So with that, we're gonna, each principal's just gonna quickly go over, because you do have them in front of you and they will be shared. The goals that they've come up with, that's gonna try to drive their work for the next three years to support outcomes for students. And then I'll wrap things up and we'll open it up to questions.
Okay.
Yes, I'll do.
Okay, okay. Okay, very much, but we are safe.
Um, so I think it's an expectation from the state that every school has a safe and healthy, right?
Uh, yes, yes, goal number one, that, it's the goal number two.
Yeah, so you'll see a lot of consistency with the middle school and the high school. Goals, they're very similar, if not identical, with like different grade level variations, so we've worked closely together, Principal Payne and myself. You know, on, on being a joint program at you. So the safe and healthy school goal is focuses on a tool that we use at the school called SRSSIE screener. So it's a screener that we ask teachers to do a couple times a year, and it identifies students that are at risk or internalizing or externalizing behaviors, at-risk behaviors. And the goal is really twofold. It's one, an eighty percent or higher completion rate of the screener, that, you know, eighty percent or higher, ideally higher, a hundred percent. Obviously, of the students are, are screened. We, through the student's advisor, since every student in the building has an advisor, that's one kind of consistent time that, you know, every student has an advisor in the building, so we screen them through that. And then the other piece of it is that we're striving for seventy percent of students to be scoring in the low-risk category on the SRSSIE for externalizing or internalizing behaviors. And, you know, I don't, I don't know if you want me to go in deeper into it, but I could, I could answer questions, but that's in a nutshell the goal. Twofold, eighty percent completion rate for the screener, again, teachers completed, for students, wanna make sure that every student is screened. And that, you know, we're, we're striving for seventy percent low risk, in both externalizing and internalizing. So then we roll into a ELA goal. And the E, so this is based on our MAP test that you take measures of academic progress. And what the MAPS does for you is it provides a growth measure, how much the student should grow based on the score that they took the last time they took the test. We take it fall, winter and spring. So, you know, they take this, the test in the fall, and they say, hey, this student should score in, you know, this X number of months, they should make this much growth, and it gives you a, a growth goal. And our goal is that sixty percent of students in grade six through eight are meeting their growth measure by the RIT. Now, I also wanna point out in that, you know, it might say that they make eight points of growth based on the grade level and where they, you know, where they're performing. And they might make seven points of growth. They didn't meet their goal. Still, you know, it's still a solid improvement. So, you know, you might ask, well, why are you only sixty percent? It's actually a pretty, you know, a pretty lofty goal in that regard, so I wanted to share that little anecdote about, you know, you have students making growth, but sometimes it's not to the level of that growth measure that the, the MAPS test happens to work. And then we also have a secondary goal within that, which is just focusing on our historically marginalized. Um, and then we also have a a secondary goal within that, uh which is just um focusing on our uh historically marginalized uh or and or privileged stu- like the gap, excuse me, can historically marginalized and historically privileged students. So basically, um, you know, closing that gap with having more historically marginalized students meetings in the center. Yep, and the math is very, very similar to the ELA goal. Um, it's based on the MAP test, uh the RIT score, again, the growth, growth measure that I just spoke about. And again, it's sixty percent of students, grades six through eight, uh will will meet that growth measure, that sixty percent, I'm sorry, sixty percent of them that will meet that growth growth measure that the MAPS test projects for you. Um, and then same thing, we have a a, you know, a goal, a secondary goal under that for historic, uh to close the the gap between historically um marginalized and historically privileged students.
Okay.
So as Chris said, our goals are identical. So striving for, I will say that the MAP test uh has been a much more effective tool as far as driving instruction. Uh, it's individualized for kid. It it helps you set goals for how much kiddo should be growing. Um, it also is, uh, the results are much more readily available to teachers. And the MAP test provides all kinds of resources of mathematics, let's say. Kid is now ready to learn this concept. Uh, I find it to be a much more useful uh assessment than the federally mandated B cap, which we just completed a couple of weeks ago, which you won't get the results until a year later. And and you know, by that time, you've got a different cohort of kids in front of you, so.
And and actually to Mr. Payne's, you can get the results from the MAPS test almost immediately. I mean, there's, there's a, you know, sometimes a couple hour lag, but teachers can get on there like that same day usually and they are within twenty-four hours of the results.
Yeah, and much more, and I'd much rather talk about kids growing, talks about effective classroom teaching, how much you're supposed to be growing in a year rather than, you know, uh efficiency mark that, you know, the federal government establishes. So I find it to be a more useful tool. But yeah, and it's helpful that those schools are coming. They've used this assessment, they've used the, they're used to the survey, and it's a helpful common conversation. What's that? I understand this, Chris.
So you're.
So.
Yep. So you're okay with the other. So this is the high school ELA.
Yep. That's that.
And Carmen. So the the last thing that we'd like to highlight is that, yep, so the last thing you want to highlight is that uh these are three-year goals. And then over the course of the three years, we're going to be collecting uh data three times a year. We do screenings. And so for ELA, math and social emotional behavior, uh in our district, we look at a three uh three times a year collection so that uh we can, uh, school-level teams can analyze the data and to make adjustments that are linked to our multi-tiered systems of support. And then twice a year, we give staff an opportunity to give us feedback about how they think the system is working so that we can also um make updates as well. And then we also use curriculum-based measures, both in middle school and high school. Um, and have many staff members. Again, I think last time we counted a hundred and forty staff members that did some kind of summer work um related to updating um uh curriculum-based measures and some of that is linked to assessments. So again, we look forward to coming back and sharing the outcomes. And again, I want to thank um Mr. Bar and Mr. Payne for leading both of their school communities through this year-long process, where again, we received very positive feedback from the state.
It's important just to point out too that teachers are involved in this process. So, you know, we're working on their building leadership teams, there's teacher representation, support staff representation on our leadership teams. They're involved with the the goal setting and the process.
Do you have a question then, before I do the next part?
Can I ask one question? Can you refer, just reference when we do budgets?
Yes.
That like, so like just so that to help with mine, that's like highlighting.
Yes.
When you set the budget would be helpful.
So we are gonna, I I really appreciated the state um asking us to be through recovery and through S R, we were required to come back and give you updates when to social emotional. Um, the work that we were doing, the academic success. So we, those two board, fall board meetings would we would have the goal upfront and continue. And I I would just, that would be a great uh process to continue, even though S R money is going by, because I think that will. For that season.
Um, also my important thing in your packet, you have the school calendar. I just want to go through the process of how the calendar is set. Um, it is the statutory responsibility of the superintendent to set the calendar regionally, it's supposed to be a regional calendar. Um, meeting with other superintendents. That has changed since Arlington has to come to us. Supposed to be a regional ca- calendar around everyone who sends to the same tech center so that vacations align and students minimally lose time. Um. The impact of this calendar, uh, one of the things that's come up is the amount of early release days, particularly since Arlington joined our district. And plus of how many they, every uh Wednesday, January, February, most of March is an early release day on Wednesday. This is the ski program, so that's in our calendar, plus with the half-days that we have. As superintendent, I sit here and tell you that I would have a early release day every week for professional learning, to continue, collaboration, meetings. Um, it is, a couple of things have impacted our ability to do professional learning uh during the past few years. Typically, uh, we would do professional learning, but say, for example, bring all the second grade teachers who specialize in math together to our building, we're over on Beach Street, and they would do an all-day workshop. And we would put substitutes out to the buildings. We have on a typical day, maybe eight substitutes available now, district-wide and the whole issue. There's just a lot signing up to be substitutes the way they were, and much as we've increased our rates and everything. So probably is just as we struggle with our positions as corporations too. So we're not able to do that and professional learning to like this, this continuous improvement plan doesn't take place without staff being involved in professional learning. And I can't require teachers to stay after school. I can't require them to come on Saturdays. I can't require them to come during school vacation. I can't require them to come during the summer. If they came, then it would be voluntary. And we kind of, we have time for mandated professional learning is we do early release days. But that's why they're valuable from an educational point of view. I'm not downplaying the impact that it may have on families. I'm not downpaying, downplaying the impact that, you know, Southwest Tech has expressed that um they receive federal funds, Perkins funds, which uh go to technical programs, but they have an hour requirement of how long they have to be for that program to count for Per- uh for Perkins funding. So uh, that, their claim is that is, that is impacting them, that their students are still uh going, but MAU students still go on Wednesday afternoons, but my, uh what I am informed is that attendance is not as uh as uh robust as they, you know, they would like to see. So what came out in negotiations is a committee will be formed once the contract is ratified and approved by all boards and then takes effect in July. There'll be a committee made up of designated representatives that will work with the superintendent to make recommendations for for a a contract. Um, I mean, a calendar that may be more uh appealing to everyone. Uh, I'm committed to to that work, but I will also say that at the end, it is the superintendent's uh that put the, put the uh calendar together. I am required to send a calendar by April first to the state. So this contract, this calendar has already gone to the state. So it is on your agenda more as uh an information piece. But when you know with, yeah, con- the contract negotiations, it did come up. Uh, the teachers association would like to eliminate all early release days. That was their recommendation. I can agree to that. So, because it's for the reason that I mentioned. Any questions on calendar before I get, I have one more thing to mention. Um, welcome to new members. I typically do one-on-one meetings with every member. Uh, I had put off a medical procedure until after all budgets passed, so I was unavailable. So I will be reaching out to all new members now that I'm back to set up one-on-one meetings. Some of the other members will remember those and my set, my set uh questions to uh improve dialogue and to jumpstart the relationship. So I will be in contact. And that's it.
Um, any other question? Move on to policies. Um, we have policy five zero eight zero. Um, I was just looking at, it's actually dressed policy. Um, that uh is set for adoption. I have a motion to adopt policy.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, moving on. We have um policy number five one two zero, concussion management, and this is for adoption. I have a motion to adopt the policy.
So move.
Yes. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Alright.
Either you.
Okay.
Just make sure we go through the whole thing if you go. Alright, um, we have policy number six one zero zero, library material selection. This is our one, this is a warning of the policy. I think I need a motion to warn it.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to warn the policy?
I'll move.
All in favor? Okay, and then we have policy four zero zero one, harassment of employees. This um is a proposed uh replacement for four zero zero one, preventing and responding of unlawful harassment of employees and type of the party. And this is to warn. Can I have a motion to warn this?
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Alright.
Uh, and then we have policy four zero, free bullying prevention adults. This is um a motion to remove from the policies.
What?
I guess.
Being replaced by.
Okay, so that's the, this is what, it's a replacement.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Great. We will um move on to the administrators before student representatives.
Wow, I apologize for our attendance. We had some technical difficulties. Um, so as we know, mainly during seniors, and as we near graduation, we only have one more meeting left that we're going to be able to attend. But we've decided to uh introduce you to two uh student representatives that we have selected for um to replace us. Who names, I don't know, next to me right now, anything?
Then Bully and then sophomore.
Welcome. Are we reaching out to you too? I treat, you you'll meet with me when I want to, like, uh, or you both can meet with at the same time, but as new members. And so, yeah.
Alright, so spring sport has started. Um, my personal comments.
Um, so in case you guys noticed, we were a little late, um, which is, because um, which is actually something I wanted to bring up. So we're about to graduate, so it doesn't really matter for us, but um we don't actually have any um information or communication about when the meetings are. We kind of just look at the calendar that's on the website and show up. So the only reason that we knew that the meeting last week was moved is because we got direct communication from one of the board members. Um, and.
You don't receive the packet?
No. Um.
I can change.
So, uh, and we thought the meeting was at six. So that can be something for future, because we don't, we only have one meeting left at this point, but um and it has never been an issue before, so.
And it's easy. Thank you for bringing that to our, to my attention. That's an easy fix, and you can be on that distribution list.
Uh, and also, I just wanted to let board members know that, like, in terms of the Spinelli Field Project, I've received communication from like, he, members of the community, specifically members of the cardiology department at the hospital, who stated that they have money that they wanted. Like, that's not, I don't know how this works. So I just want to let people know that that's a thing. Like, there are people in the community who apparently have, like, funding that they're, what they want to spend on Spinelli or but towards funding an emergency meeting or something, because they don't want to wait or, I'm not really sure. This Dr. Rogie from the cardiology department, so.
And so I, yeah, I'll.
I figure I would run along to someone who could do something.
You just did do something.
Nice.
Oh, okay, so, um, just some updates. We, prom tickets go on sale on the thirteenth of May. Um.
Yeah, but but not, not a lot has happened. We had to offer.
Where's the prom?
Uh, it's a.
Cogee Park.
Yeah, that's what it's called. I can tell you how to get there, but I don't.
Senior stuff happened, packed and drawn for the education tickets.
Yeah, that's all we have.
Yeah, you want to talk about Honk?
Oh.
Nice job in the play.
Um, Honk is over. It was good, it was good.
And you were either.
I was, yeah. Um, I, like, I have no idea about in terms of.
I mean.
Attendance was good at all the shows, I think.
Yeah.
Community spirits were lifted.
Yeah, we had a lot of, like, community sponsors for the show that.
Here with a surprise snowstorm.
Yeah.
Yes, and are very grateful that we will perform.
Yes, yes, that was, that was really, really great.
That the roads were safe for people to come.
Kind of, kind of in my mind. For those of you who've seen the show, you would, you would know. Um, anyways, yeah, it was good.
I think Vince Sweet, having all those elementary kids ensures that they're going to be part of the program when they get to high school. And I wish our athletic teams could uh reach down and get people interested like that.
Yeah, it's, it's a really cool program. I I've, I've done it myself several, I was in several shows when I was in elementary school, so that, that was one of them.
And I uh, I'm a tennis coach for junior tennis learning, and so I uh help coach grades three to nine.
Where do you do that?
I, I get into college, but then it can ages. So I'm, I'm, I uh, there's the freshman at the last school that uh I was like their counselor, their coach, and I see them coming to tennis. It's been exciting. Well, I try to spread it somehow.
That's all for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Under the, um, high school.
Um, I have two parts to a presentation outside of two, at least, two parts. Um, first, I just, a couple of thank yous. Uh, I want to thank Sarah Mnuchin, who's an English teacher, and Helen Carmichael, who are a math teacher of the high school. They were my coordinators for the state testing last month. They did a tremendous job. Um, and as a result, we're able to uh meet our participation goal for all graders and temporarys participating in that state test. So I want to thank them both for that. I think Katie Contrada, uh, who's a history teacher, and Ashley Lewis, who's a counselor at the high school. Uh, they are the folks who coordinated the NEAS visit that happened before we went on week during the eclipse and all kinds of fun-filled things. Um, as a result of their efforts, the team that visited us gave us very positive feedback, both on our written report and the building visit. Um, I look forward to hearing back from NEAS in the coming months. I want to also thank the superintendent and board members who met with the visiting team for your time and your feedback. Again, the chair of the visiting team was very positive in all aspects of the MAU, so I appreciate everybody's effort on that. Um, just two dates for folks to remember. Graduation is June the seventh at six P M. School board members have traditionally sent a delegation to stand or sit with the superintendent and myself on the uh stage. You are again, welcome to do that. That may go through the chair and Mr. Paul Keen. Uh, but if you could tell us in advance, uh, there are robes and things like that if folks need those accoutrements, de jinnas, so. Um, but I know that students and families always appreciate the representation. Again, that's June the seventh at six P M. And we hope to have another nice sunny day like today, so that we're not sad to gym. Uh, and then the last thing I'm just for community information, uh, this year, the track and field team only has one home meet, according to my most recent calendar. That would be May the seventh. I invite all community members to come out and cheer for that team. Maybe take a walk with me around Spinelli. Get a close look at the facilities and their current conditions while we're going to lead that tour. Uh, there was a request from the uh board uh for an update on the high school schedule as we move forward. Um, so just, I'll try to do this very quickly, when I arrived at uh, the high school three years ago, my first year as principal, we had the same schedule that I taught in the nineteen nineties, long block, what that means is uh, eighty-five minute instructional blocks per subject, uh, they were semester-based courses, a student's day would be three long blocks of eighty-five minutes each, and one short interest block, which would be fifty-five minutes. The observation at the start of being principal here was that ninety, an eighty-five minute block was too long, especially for ninth and tenth graders. In addition, you could have your math class in the fall of your freshman year and not see mathematics again until the spring of your sev- your tenth grade year. We also knew that already students were behind coming into the high school as far as their foundational skills, that wasn't working for us. After two years of conversation, this being my third year, we did uh, implement a s- uh, new schedule, and recognize that that's a big change for folks. We had sixty-minute instructional blocks for all classes, ninth and tenth graders took year-long courses in our core subject areas. Um, everything else, and electives and upperclassmen were semester-based courses. A student's day would be five classes of one-hour instruction each, a flex block, and a lunch block for a six-hour school day. We have experienced uh, challenges with the new schedule, uh, some observations just off the top. Folks doing math at home, we're gonna figure out very quickly, their students are only offered the five classes a year, they can't possibly reach the twenty-four credits in four years. Uh, if they're only earning five credits a year, also it limits the number of choices students can have. So, for next year, we're gonna make an adjustment, there will be sixty-minute and ninety-minute instructional blocks. Ninth and tenth graders will continue to have their core subjects, math, English, social studies, and science as a year-long. Eleven and twelve graders will have semester-long courses in the core. Electives will be offered by the semester, they can be a combination of sixty minutes and ninety minutes. Students will continue to have five classes a day, a flex block, and a lunch. The consideration for um that the positives, what we're hoping for is year-long courses will help build ninth and tenth graders foundational skills. Um, they'll also have a better connection cuz they'll have teachers for the year-long. Semester-long courses for eleventh and twelfth grade, I think reflects the goals of some of our seniors, which is going off college, where you will have semester-long courses, that makes more sense to us. This also lines up with Southwest Tech, which Mr. Colke suggested earlier, requires a two-hour instructional block for their programs, and this lines us up better than what we've asked before. Now, Tech was able to support that in the past because they had a waiver from the state, that waiver has now expired, and going forward, the expectation is they will meet two hours a day. All other classes, uh, uh, all, uh, uh, sorry, all other uh, choices will still be available to all students. The idea being a sixty-minute, year-long class will earn you a credit, a ninety-minute semester-long course historically earned you a credit. You take a sixty-minute semester-long elective, it'll be a half a credit. I will point out too, under the, under the system as I arrived three years ago, again, it's the same system that was in place when Dave and I were on the same faculty, um, is that what we have is seniors arriving to their senior year, if they've done everything we've asked, in their senior year, they have to take one class, that's English. So you can imagine the conversations that I've had in the last three years with seniors who were like, why am I here? Why are you making me take classes? There's a whole variety of things they could be doing, they could be taking classes in the Southwest Tech, they could be taking electives, they could be doing community-based learning, they could be doing internships. So, my hope is that by uh, giving students choice, they will take advantage of more of the opportunities, they will spend a full four years, we will prepare them better for work in college, military service, whatever, reaching them beyond, but the youth have thought, is they've had lots of sparing conversations with seniors, all people. That's, that's my update, is that, is that a start for the conversation?
Yeah, I, so, you said that it's year-long, still year-long, s- sixty minutes, so, like, my understanding was that it's A B days? Is that correct?
Not an A B day.
It is not, so.
I got an A B day.
So, so. So how does the schedule work if we're switching it, so, are we going back to what it was? I'm, I'm so confused.
We're doing a hybrid, so if you're a ninth or a tenth grader.
Mm-hmm.
You're.
Cause I have one of each, so that's why I'm trying to figure out.
Sure, so if you, did you have a ninth or tenth grader this year?
I had a ninth grader.
So, here, learned a couple things, and I'm a, I'm a little more comfortable with tweaking the schedule cuz Chris personally had me do that almost every year in the nine years I was at the middle school, high school's been a little bit more of a slow process. But, this year, your ninth or tenth grader would use up four of their blocks for a subject area, right? Which is fine for building foundational skills, but it only gives them one block of choice, and they can take a class in the fall and the spring. Well, that drove numbers in art and music and health through the floor, which is not a good thing. So, a suggestion for next year, for ninth and tenth grade specifically, is it, and I know where you're going with the A B day, a humanities approach. So combining English and social studies in one of those blocks, and so what you're using is three out of the five for core subject, opening up a block of time for another choice, you wanna take Spanish, you wanna take, uh, you wanna play in the band. That was our hope, is that, hey, let's not use up eighty percent of a ninth and tenth graders' day doing core, we're gonna, you know, ruin our electric.
So they're having it every, all year long, so are they having? So, I guess the way I was understanding from my visit with setting up my ten, now soon-to-be tenth grader's schedule is that they'll have, like, English and social studies one day, and then the next day, math and science, but that's not the case.
No.
Okay, so then, how are they doing all year then, is it? How are they taking those core classes all year then, I guess I'm, I'm.
Sure, so again, imagine five one-hour blocks, we'll eliminate the lunch and the flex, which is an hour in a day, so you have five. This year, we used four of those fives for your core, each one of those classes had a year-long, one-hour instructional block on a day. Well, we've, and I, yeah, we continue to have, cuz now we're actually building the real schedule, we're gonna plug humans into this schedule and see how it works along, but the proposal was combining, and there's history, that's how I want to term, there's history of humanities at the high school. People in both social studies and English are experienced being with a teacher to offer a humanities approach. So you have two teachers teaching a group of kids, English and social studies. The idea being that using only, but only using that for a block of time would free up other places, so you're still gonna get your four core subjects. We're not using an A B day, uh, we did talk about that pretty lengthy for the course of the year as a way of, again, what we're trying to do is create time in the day for more choice. But, specifically for math and science, we couldn't do an A B day.
What about like A P classes then?
So, A P classes will continue to be a ninety-minute class. I will, I wanna say something since we're gonna open that door, let's step through that for a minute, so A P, this is the way I taught it in the nineties, God bless Renata Wheelock for trusting me with those keys. You get a ninety-minute block, now remember, A P is supposed to be a college course, right, you're trying to teach kids the rigor of a college course. So it's a semester-long course, ninety minutes a day. In addition, at Mount Anthony, we schedule you for sixty minutes in the spring, because the test is in May. So that's ninety minutes in the fall, sixty minutes, it's an incredible amount of time for our kids to be prepared. Now, the scores at MAU are very good, I'd, I'd bet my lunch money against anybody nearby, and I wanna be clear with folks. Mount Greylock, A P t- classes are forty-five minutes a day for the year, that's it.
And like this year, they were sixty minutes a day for the year.
Yeah, and that clear, but they were for the year, and well, and it was dedicated, because I wanna, it's a good point you bring up. When I taught A P U S as ninety minutes, I got sixty minutes, but I might have to share that with the A P English teacher, because very likely, we had the same kid as. So it wasn't a dedicated sixty-minute block the entire time running up to test prep, and again, if I stopped teaching them in January, you have several months where you're trying to keep it fresh, keep it in the front of their head, keep them practicing, and meanwhile, they've taken on new classes cuz it's the spring semester. So we're gonna continue to make that commitment to A P, it's a ninety-minute class.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it'll be ninety minutes in the fall, it'll be sixty minutes in the spring, because we need to open up a parking spot in the spring semester for a ninety-minute block, and it, there's been some creative flexibility with that as well, like, y- you might have an A P class that goes ninety minutes in the fall, and your other one might flex to be ninety minutes in the spring. Our hope is that by having a hybrid of classes of sixty and ninety minutes, it, it meets, it meets the needs of ninth and tenth graders, as well as eleventh and twelfth graders who are preparing to do the next step.
So, outside of A Ps, what classes are ninety minutes?
It A Ps.
Just A Ps?
Yeah.
Are the only ones that are ninety minutes?
If you're taking Southwest Tech, you have a two-hour class.
And all other core classes, like, your, you know, honors math or A level math, those are sixty minutes.
Sorry, I'll back up for a minute, if you're in ninth and tenth grade, your core classes are sixty minutes year-long. If you are an eleventh or twelfth grader, you're gonna be taking classes in a ninety-minute, it'll look a lot like it probably did when I arrived, you take English in this, uh, in the fall, you may take science in the spring, there'll be ninety minutes each.
And where does foreign language fit into all of that?
Foreign language will be a semester-long course, you can sign up for.
Ninety minutes, or?
It'll be a sixty-minute course, unless you're taking an A P.
And even though it was ninety minutes, or, of, when we did.
Seriously, yeah, when I arrived, it was a ninety-minute semester course.
So we're, so we, so we're going from a ninety-minute semester course, then to a year-long, was it, what would, cuz like, one kid now has a sixty-minute and one, a sixty-minute half-year, and one kid has a year-long half-year. Between my two kids, so like, it's very different between the two Spanish classes that they're taking. So we're gonna go to a semester-long sixty minute.
Semester course for that.
And they're gonna be able to do their curriculum in that, even though they were doing it ninety minutes before?
I've talked to the language teachers, and they feel they can do that.
No, I just say, we don't have this listed as an agenda item, so I, it, I, I, to, to be totally transparent, should, if we wanted to do a lengthy discussion on the, we could put the uh, on a next agenda.
Okay, alright, I mean, that's kind of why, I, I was just curious, because I've been hearing about the schedule with.
And I.
And that's why I kind of requested.
There might be others that have a question that, that didn't know it was gonna be discussed, right?
Okay.
And I'm happy to meet with the subcommittee too, and I can bring examples of student schedules. I'm a visual planner, I would, I would do better by small group, here you go, this is what it looks like. And like I said, we definitely have learned things this year, but my promise to the staff was, wanna try something different, I don't think ninety minutes is helping our ninth and our tenth graders. It's a long kind of student class. And you have huge gaps between math classes, I mean, and then we're all looking at the test scores and like, why are they not going up? You're not practicing math for a year, that's.
Why don't we schedule, why don't we schedule this for?
And then you may wanna bring people from the committee with you then, too.
Sure.
Yeah.
For the next meeting.
Okay.
Now, I was, I was on the tail end of, I graduated at Mount Anthony when they switched to that first schedule, and then, and I, I think I maybe attended for one class a day my entire senior year.
You're, you're driving senior year now.
Yeah. Worked a lot, um, okay, so uh, if there's no other questions, we'll add that as an agenda item for the next meeting, and then um, move on to the middle school. All you can press.
Alright, I think I have a, a brief report for once. Um, it's definitely gonna be more brief than that.
Well, that was my double mind.
No, it's a.
Oh, no question.
Yeah. Um, alright, so a couple uh, dates that I think I've mentioned briefly, but just to give a little bit more details, so the bottom dates are coming up this week. On uh, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, uh, we will be hosting our annual career fair during the school day. Um, I think the times are eight thirty, no, eight oh five to ten o'clock, I think, are, is the timeframe, we'll be cycling sixth, seventh, and eighth graders through that. Um, big thanks to Hannah Green, uh, school counselor, who um, this, has kind of taken this project under her wing, uh, has been doing it for a number of years. She does an outstanding job getting uh, community participation, and uh, it's, it's much more than just having people set up and having kids come in and, and, you know, walk around the cap, there's pre-and post activities, there's uh, interview questions to ask people, there's a focus on different career clusters where students, you know, have a little passport that they fill out, and they go around and visit, you know, a certain number in each career cluster, so it's, it's very organized, uh, it's a well-willed machine, I just wanna thank Hannah publicly for all the work that she does uh, with getting that set up. Um, so that, again, is Wednesday the twenty-fourth, and then the day after that, this Thursday, the twenty-fifth, we're hosting a MAU, an MAUMS family night. Um, and uh, one of the highlights of that night is we have a guest speaker traveling to see us named John Halligan. Uh, he focuses on bullying and cyberbullying, um, and uh, you know, he's a, he is from Vermont, but he's an international speaker and author. Um, again, there's pre-and post lessons based on the topic that we're gonna be, you know, working with students on. Um, and uh, there's a connection to the S V S U health curriculum for the, for the presentation, so we actually have um, him coming for assemblies throughout the school day on that day, he's doing a sixth grade, a seventh grade, and an eighth grade assembly. And then we have him contracted to come during our family night from six ten to seven ten and speak to families on the topic. So I'm really excited about that, we've been communicating with him, and uh, he seems to be excited to, to come and uh, you know, uh, you know, help us and hear a story. Um, he's dedicated his career uh, to this after uh, losing his son to suicide due to um, bullying and cyberbullying. So it's a, yeah, it's gonna be a, you know, it's gonna be a real relevant, um, you know, helpful presentation, I feel. I mean, I'm proud that we're taking that step and bringing that to the school. Uh, then on top of that, a couple other dates, um, I, I've mentioned these briefly, but I don't think I gave any specifics, we have rising sixth graders and rising seventh grade open houses coming up. So these are, you know, incoming sixth and incoming seventh graders, open houses, our, our eighth graders have already been in the building, so uh, outside now, that's why we don't do a rising seventh grade, or eighth, eighth grade open house, although we will do open houses for everybody in the fall. Um, those are uh, six to seven thirty, um. Okay, I wrote the dates for those, I don't have the dates for those, I apologize, but I get, I wrote the dates for everything else, I hope you wrote those down. And then I have uh, welcome days, so that's when our rising sixth graders and our rising seventh graders come and visit, um, uh, visit the school during the school day, and we team them up with students, they gotta get a face of, you know, what life of middle school is like, they sit in some classes, they sit on a, uh, with a, a student uh, panel that answers questions for them, attend lunch with uh, with their student, um, uh, you know, the people that are showing them around. And those are uh, the rising seventh grade, the seventh and the eighth of May, and for rising sixth graders, we have more incoming sixth and seventh graders, this, you know, there's uh, there's some seventh graders already in the building, so for rising sixth, that's uh, May twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirty. So uh, just, you know, busy stuff, important, uh, busy, important end of the year stuff happening, just wanted to inform everyone, and then I'll end with, I'll end with uh, just welcoming two uh, new hires to the building who I'm, I'm really excited to have, uh, because I've, I've been, one, they're great candidates, and two, I've been uh, without these positions in the building pretty much all year, um, specifically school counselor, I have not had a third school counselor for the entire school year, and it's um, you know, thank you to uh, again, Mrs. Hannah Green and Mr. Nora Nicholas for stepping up and filling in the void, but we're welcoming Alura Thiem uh, to the team as a uh, as a uh, s- a school counselor, she's a uh, MAU grad and came through middle school and high school uh, not too long ago, she's fresh out of school, really excited to have her, and uh, Michael Lombard will be joining us as a special educator, filling a vacant position after the remainder of the year, so. Exciting stuff, and I can say that it is uh, the twenty-second of April, and I'm almost fully staffed, so that's a good thing. Thank you.
Any questions?
I just wanted to make a statement, I just wanted um, just to say, I had the pleasure of going to Panama last week, and it was a fantastic experience. I just wanna congratulate the high school on their next trip, and um, Mr. Wada is doing an amazing job, and this, it was a, an amazing experience, so.
I was in the building, bright and shiny, I was very impressed. Eighty degrees, they said.
Yeah, it was hot. But it was fun, great program.
Great, um, do you have a date for the moving up ceremony, just wa- to, so that board members, if they wanted to.
The uh, the welcome days are the rising open houses.
Oh, good. Eighth grade, like, last year, we had people representing.
Oh, uh, I do not, because we wait until this meeting, till the calendar is finalized, before we, before we set that, and now that we I, it sounds like final confirmation that that is the case, I will, uh, we'll go back tomorrow, I got the, um, you know, the uh, graduation date, you know, under the belt, so we'll, we'll, in the next couple days, we'll have that, so you know.
I just wouldn't mind sending it to, so that that way the group could.
I just wouldn't mind sending it to so that that way the group could plan, somebody could plan shortly. Sure. Last year, I kind of, there was a nice ceremony, but I'm happy to be in the audience this year, so if there was a board member that wants, so. Like that was.
I'll communicate that with the superintendent.
Thank you. Um, alright, we have committee reports.
Um, education, we have not met yet since the we just reformed, um and I was late last week. Um, but I plan to contact um the the new new members of the committee and get something on the schedule for the weekend.
I think there might have been, I I think there might have been the ag committee, um, but I just saw it, it's for tomorrow maybe. Um, but uh there's nothing else that I know.
No other committees active at this time.
Okay, um, I, the chair's report, I don't have anything for today cuz I'm really alone, so I just we'll move on. Um, on fourteen for F Y I, support, student enrollment, spring coaches, and then um some administrative regs, uh both fifty-one hundred screening, um fifty-one eighty-five for flaxit, fifty-one forty for communicable diseases updated. Um. We will move on um to executive session.
We vote for that.
Okay, um, who are we voting to have in with us?
The superintendent stay in and the director of H R, Nicole.
Okay, we will be coming out, make a motion.
Yes.
Um, can I have a motion to go into executive session, um including Superintendent Nicole Keen and Nick Bault um under one V S A three-one-three A contracts?
Uh, who? Respect.
On favor? Should I go back into open session?
Don't move.
On favor?
Alright.
Um. So I I think the last is we have, uh, we need a motion. Can I have a motion to uh for a nine percent wage increase for non-in personnel for um F one, the F Y twenty-five school years, that's twenty-four, twenty-five.
Don't move.
Need discussion? On favor? I'm looking to adjourn.
Don't move.
Okay.